Alright, good evening, everyone. It is now 5:00 PM on Thursday, August 19th, 2021. I hereby call this special meeting of the Board of Education of the Nardonia Hill City School District to order. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss whether masks will be required to be worn in school. Mr. Brown, please call her all.
Mr. Larmour.
Here.
Mrs. McKinley.
Here.
Ms. Matlin.
Here.
Mr. Bucy.
Here.
Mrs. Strong.
Here.
All Board members present?
Yep. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the discussion of masks for tonight's meetings, uh, tonight's meeting, I'd like to go over a few things. Tonight's meeting is a meeting in public, but is not a public meeting. There will not be an open forum as a part of tonight's meeting. A survey was provided to the public so we could get as much feedback from as many different people as possible. I realize this is a decision that has made some people unhappy. I believe this format increased participation and was more inclusive for the community as a whole. As of the close of the survey, we had 1,162 comments. I would like to thank everyone who took the time to participate in the survey. At our last meeting on July 19th, the Board indicated that we were inclined to only require masks in the buildings if mandated by state or federal regulations. However, since that time, circumstances have changed. The CDC, the ODH, the ODE, Summit County Public Health, Akron Children's Hospital, American Academy of Pediatricians, Cleveland Clinic, and Suma Health have all sent us recommendations that masks be worn indoor in school settings. Since that time, Dr. Clark and the Board have received numerous emails, both supporting and opposing masks. Per the survey and social media, I have seen numerous suggestions that only unvaccinated people should be required to wear masks. The state passed House Bill 244, which prevents the district from discriminating against an individual who has not received a COVID-19 vaccine. Therefore, requiring unvaccinated students only to wear a mask is not permitted. However, the district can differentiate by building and age group, which you will see in a moment when I get into the agenda. So tonight's agenda, first, the Board will discuss and vote on adjustments to Policy 9.44 regarding face masks. This is the policy we had in place last school year. The revised policy removes the requirement for masks in school buildings and makes the required, the masks, uh, required for, only for school buses and vans, which is currently mandated at the federal level. The policy then also states the Board may require persons entering districts to build, where, to buildings to wear masks if approved by the Board. Second, the Board will discuss and vote on a resolution to require masks for students in grades K through six. Grades K through six are being separated out because students under the age of 12 are not permitted to be vaccinated at this point. Third, the Board will discuss and vote on a resolution to require masks for students in grades 7 through 12. Students in these grades are eligible for vaccination, so we separated this into two different votes. Fourth, the Board will discuss and vote on a resolution to require masks for other persons entering the school buildings, such as teachers, volunteers, indoor spectators, etc. Finally, I'd like to thank Donna Scoda, the Health Commissioner for Summit County Public Health, for being here with us tonight to answer any questions that the Board might have. Can I get a motion for the approval to revise Board Policy 9.44?
A motion.
I'll second.
Alright, any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, can you hear me? I want to make sure my...
Little closer, maybe about six inches or so.
A little close, there?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Um, the one thing in the policy is that it is saying, uh, required to wear a mask at all times. I would ask to revise that to when it is mandated to require it to be worn. Not our decision to mandate it, period. I, 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 I agree with the mandate. I will vote for a mandate, but if it's not mandated by the Governor, the State, the Health Department, CDC, whatever, then no. This one I know is being mandated. I'm not going to get into the argument of mandate law and, and I, you know, to me, that's a moot point. Um, so according to this policy, you would, you would mandate this all the time? And you're not saying according to the CDC or TSA or whoever you're going by?
Well, for, just for clarification, um, you're not talking mandated by the Board in any way, shape, or form? You're talking about mandated at a government level above us?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the policy was written this way because that's the next two items, K through six and seven through 12. So, I mean, if anyone else has anything to say about it, but I don't agree, I would rather leave it as is because then we're going to vote on it on the, the two separate grade levels. And if we want to put something in it at that level about a mandate, I think that's where it would belong.
Well, I don't agree, so I, I feel that by, by putting in there mandated, if it changes, you can have them or not have them. Or, you know, that's what I'm saying. If it's mandated, it's mandated. But if it's not mandated, I, I don't agree with having to make that decision as a Board. We're not in the Health Department. Um, actually, even I, I thought I read... I thought I had also read that if a bus driver did not have students on the bus, they did not have to wear a mask when they were alone on the bus. I had read that someplace too. And we're even getting conflicting information because we got one of, some information from our attorneys on how to read the mandate. And then we also got information that Peterman is saying that it's up to the schools and not up to Peterman, yet Peterman told Bill that it is up to them. So we're just getting conflicting information here all, all over the place. So, but like I said, this does, it's not ma, unless it's mandated and it's written that way, I can't agree to that.
Does anyone else have anything to say?
I think with the problem with the word mandated...
Judy, can you hold your, I'm sorry, can you hold the microphone a little closer so folks can hear and the cameras can hear?
Is, the passage of Senate Bill 331 has literally taken the authority out of some of these Boards from being able to deliver mandates. That's why what we're getting is strongly recommended and pleading to please consider that. If it wasn't, I'm sure there, I would like to believe there would have been. Kind of like how COVID started, what, two years ago? I lose track of time. Uh, that was the mandate and mandates were translated into law. But the legislature, and they did such a great job with, uh, you know, Senate Bill 331 is law, it's been signed.
Okay.
But anyhow, bottom line, that, that stripped the Governor and a lot of people of the ability to make their recommendations mandate.
Okay, so why can't we do like we did before? Um, because I, I've been, I, I went through over a thousand comments. I went through, I spent over eight hours reading all the comments from everybody. And I do appreciate everybody's feedback and I understand everybody has their own opinions, I really do. But some of the recommendations and, you know, I mean, we do have to come, I believe, to a compromise. We're not all going to be happy. But we gave Joe the authority last year to base it on our zip code, on our local data. And right now, our local data doesn't support that it is required.
You did not give me the, you did not give me the authority to do masks. You only gave me the authority to do, um, online school, hybrid or whatnot.
No, we discussed like if, depending on if cases, you could change it.
Not for masks. In fact, that's exactly why you're voting on 9.44. This is the policy the Board voted on last year. This, this policy is actually still current because the Board has not taken the time to rescind it or mediate it. If this were to fail, masks would be mandated still for all students, which is why we're taking this action.
Why couldn't we do that again with masks? Depending on the data, our local data?
We required masks all last school year, that's what the policy was. What we're saying...
I know, I'm saying going forward, why can't we do that?
You mean on like a matrix type?
Like we did last year when you were saying depending on the number of cases. Would depend on if a school was going hybrid or if they had to go online.
Right. Well, again, right now, this policy is, um, would, if the Board adopts this policy as written by legal, it would require masks on transportation, which is federal law, and that's it.
And then we do a resolution for K through six or seven through 12, that's what the next two items are.
Right, but it's still saying, it, it doesn't say when it's mandated by federal law. It's just saying that we're mandating it.
I agree, because we're not ready to say that if it's mandated by federal law, that's the next two items that we're going to discuss. Does anyone else? Bill, do you have any?
No, Ross, Ross.
Okay. No? Alright. Can you take a vote, call her all?
Mrs. Strong.
No.
Mr. Bucy.
No.
Ms. Matlin.
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley.
Yes.
Mr. Larmour.
Yes.
Motion carries 3-2.
Let's carry on.
Can we get a, um, motion for the second item?
A motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Alright, so we have, um, motion for masking K through six on the table? Uh, anyone like to talk? Bill?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Hold your microphone closer, Bill, they're not...
I, uh, I, I went through, when I pulled the data out of all these pages right here that came from all these people out here, there was 950, there was 959 people that had left some sort of a comment. So I went through all these, I read all these, some are very good. Um, and I actually tallied all these. And I'm here because I'm representing these people out here, that's my job. That's what an elected official is. 515 people stated they do not want masks in our schools. 444 stated they do. I understand that some people don't feel comfortable about kids being in school without masks. That's your, your right as a parent, okay? But it's also a right of the parent that they shouldn't have to put masks on kids to be in school. I went through this chart that I got from, that I went onto Summit County Health and I went and I looked and this is every, this right here is every week cut out by Summit County Health. They do, they've done it always since the last one. It's got very, uh, pretty good data and recently, uh, I'd say since the beginning of this year, and it states by zip code, how many cases there have been. So, all I keep hearing about is how this is, it, it's accelerating so much right now. Since July 1st up until August 11th, which is 42 days, in the Sagamore-Northfield area, there's been 29 total confirmed or probable cases in Summit County. And the reason it's confirmed or probable is, as everybody knows that's researched this, the CDC and the, and the World Health Organization will not, will not justify their own testing because they found out that the tests aren't even 100% accurate. They pick up, they pick up the flu. It's plain and simple. That's the reason why if you research it, as of December this year, the CDC and the World Health Organization said they're scrapping this test that is being currently done because they cannot justify and validate that these are actual cases of COVID compared to the flu. I am sorry, all these years that I've been alive, there's been thousands of flus. This past year, we had zero flus. It's very hard for me to believe that. So, so I went through these and from July 1st to August 11th, we've had 29 total probable cases, which comes out to .69 people per day that had a possible case in the Sagamore or Northfield area. In the Macedonia area, we had 32 total cases. That's not even, that's, that's three quarters of a person per day. It does not state, because they don't give you the specifics, if it's a juvenile, an adult, or a elderly person. As we know, our numbers were high when this all started because of a lot of our, um, uh, nursing homes and assisted living places because as we know, that's where a lot of these cases all originated back in March, April, May of last year. Because of their health, the COVID did do a number on them. But, but I am sorry, this does not justify putting kids in masks as less than one person a day.
Donna Scoda, if I could please, can I ask you a couple of questions since you are the medical expert?
Yeah, if you could hold the mic a little closer, let's...
Who's the medical expert? All I said is I looked, I, I took the time and researched all the data that we are getting from Joe and the Summit County Board of Health. If you want to ask the medical expert, ask her.
Looking at the, the data that you've been looking at since the beginning of our, the pandemic, can you explain the progression of the Delta variant surge, including where it is now? And what you project will happen in the next month or two?
How can we do the Delta variant when there isn't a test for Delta variant? The test does not describe whether it's a Delta variant or not, it's COVID. So how are you going to be able to do that?
Could she answer the question?
Let's give her a chance to answer.
Donna, go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question completely.
I'll, I'll repeat. Can you explain the progression of the Delta variant surge, including where it is now? And what you project will happen in the next month or two?
Yeah, thank you. Um, good evening. Uh, my name is Donna Scoda, I'm the Health Commissioner for Summit County Public Health. And I believe what you're asking me is that in the past, as you know, we've had ancestral, um, we've had COVID, okay? We have had this variant that has cropped up, Delta. Delta is predominantly what is circulating now in Summit County and in Ohio. It, let me explain. When somebody goes to a lab or a hospital and gets a test done, that sample is completed. You are correct when you say there is not a test at the hospital. They are sent for genetic sequencing, which identifies. It's the same thing they do with the flu, the TB, any of the communicable diseases. So it is sent for genetic testing and once it is identified, it is labeled as a Delta variant. They also look for Alpha, Beta, all of those. We, they may have looked at all of those. But this is the thing, what has been happening is Delta, every time COVID mutates, it is becoming more contagious, hitting younger and younger children. And what is happening is people are getting sicker and sicker, quicker and quicker. And what's happening now is our hospitals are getting full of individuals that have COVID. It is starting to tick up. It's starting, it's starting to increase. So the prediction right now, there is some modeling at some of the local hospitals, that they will have to stop elective surgeries again, like we did last time, in order to accommodate the COVID patients. So the prediction now is that it will continue to get worse.
I have a question, okay. As of yesterday, August 18th...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
As of yesterday, August 18th, in the age group of 0 to 20...
I'm sorry, honey, I'm sorry, can you...
I'm, okay, in the, in the zip code 44056, ages 0 through 20.
4, 5...
In area code Macedonia, 44056. Okay, so from October to January, there were, let's say there were 19 cases in October, 105 cases in January. And then from January to May, there were 161 cases, there was 56 more cases. So as of, in May to August, there were a total of 170 cases. That's only nine more cases since May 18th through August 18th. And kids are going to grad parties, they've been traveling, they've been going to weddings, they've been going to band camp. But please let me finish. They've been going to band camp, they have not been masked, they've been coming here to the school, they have been doing drama club, they have been doing football, they have been doing cheerleading. That's 44056. In 44067, there were just 11 cases. So you're talking at 21 cases over the past three months. But there's, and there's been no deaths, there's been no, I think there was one hospitalization? So I don't see where, I, I don't agree with, with what you were saying.
Well, let me add this.
Let me add this too, I want to, I want to include this comment that we received. I thought, because even the comments that we got from the community, we have doctors, we have nurses, we have pediatricians, and they don't even agree. We have people that work in the ER who have said they have not seen an increase in cases. I have family that works in the ER, they have not seen an increase in cases. This person says that they are a school-based and clinic-based doctor of physical therapy specializing in pediatric physical therapy. She is, he or she has seen the effects of mask wearing while trying to engage students in learning. Children are resilient, but it is important that children be able to see the faces of their teachers, therapists, school staff members, and other classrooms, um, classmates, especially at a young age. Um, they're learning social skills that will build a foundation for how they interact with other individuals the rest of their lives. Experts state that 70 to 90% of human communication is through non-verbal communication, which is hindered by mask wearing. Engaging in learning is more difficult when you cannot read the face of your teacher and hearing your teacher is more difficult when you cannot see their lips. Sensory needs increase when pe, when students are forced to accurately express themselves. Or, yeah, I'm sorry. St, sensory needs increase when students are forced to undergo poor hearing and when they struggle to interpret communication from others. Students lose the ability to accurately express themselves and are physically distracted by wearing masks, causing them to be unregulated, disorganized, discouraged, and disengaged in the school setting, which we all know leads to poor academic outcomes. And I know there has been an increase in, um, suicide rates for youth all across the country, and it's, it's horrible. But this is coming from a school-based and clinical-based doctor of physical therapy specializing in pediatric therapy.
I'm sorry, the question was about the data, is that what you're asking?
No, I'd like to know your comment, I mean, do you, do you agree with that or not?
No, I don't. And let me tell you, this is the problem.
You don't agree with the learning that kids need to see?
This is, that could be, that gentleman may have evidence that, I don't know what you're looking at, I don't have the references, I don't know anything.
Right, so really you can't make this decision then?
I, I'm just telling you.
Okay, I know.
I'm just saying to you, I don't agree with that statement. Because, let me say this, you are looking at numbers. The CDC and the state of Ohio designated us today a hotspot. It means that our cases are climbing clear up to 200 per 100,000 again. And I know that doesn't sound like a lot, but it's high. And I have to say to you, quite honestly, that you're reading those numbers of people who actually got tested. There's a lot of people that aren't tested that are spreading this virus. And the unfortunate thing about COVID-19, it, and I know I'm really close to it and I know I've been really involved and I've seen horrible things, but I have to tell you, the worst part about getting COVID is that you don't know, number one, you don't know how you're going to come out of it. I have seen 28-year-olds who end up with cardiac arrhythmias.
Okay, we're not talking about 28-year-olds, we're talking about our students now.
I know, but I have seen youngsters who end up with their asthma being more severe. We had 81 kids in Summit County who ended up hospitalized. They are on M, they have MIS.
As a person who has asthma, wearing the mask makes it harder for me to breathe.
And there is a medical exemption for people who... But you do, there's a medical exemption less than two years of age, and if you have asthma. No one is asking you...
There is a medical exemption written right into the Policy 9.44 that we already voted on that if your doctor signs off on the medical exemption, that you can't breathe because of asthma or whatever, then there's an exemption for wearing a mask. Okay, what did you say? It's in the policy.
But when you're saying it's a hotspot, when you're saying we're a hotspot, that was said a year ago. But we made the choice, when we were read and considered we shouldn't even be going to school, we still went to school and our kids succeeded much better than they would have if they, if they had stayed home.
And I would agree.
We based it on local data, not Summit County data.
Yes, they were all wearing masks at that time.
Hey, hey, Tammy.
I'm still basing it on our local data. And I'm basing the numbers I just gave you on our local data.
And if you go by the CDC's table of, uh, continuum, hotspot is only a medium range.
No.
Yes, it is. It's right here in the paper where they came from.
Oh, that, okay, I'm sorry, I see what you're looking at, okay.
It is a medium range. There's low burden, moderate burden, emerging hotspot, hotspot, sustained hotspot, high burden, and modern bur, burden resolving. We are at a hotspot and that's because the numbers went up because of one day that we were at 153 cases that they had. Your data that came out today shows that over the last five days, we are, uh, let's see, here, here we're 70 under from that day. Here's 100 under from that day, another 70 under from that day, 70 under. We haven't even reached 80 a day in the last five days. So next week, when you put this out, it's not going to be a hotspot, we're probably going to go back down.
Okay.
Because that's by the, by, by your numbers that are in your thing that you guys post online.
Yeah, and the caveat to those numbers are, those are lab numbers that come to us. They are reported at different times.
Okay.
So the lab reporting does influence.
Alright, hold on, Judy, would you like to say, go ahead and...
Okay, Mrs. Scoda, I have a couple of questions, but I'm going to keep them like short because they don't require answers. When we look at the psychological devastation of a child, being out of school, is that one of the things that could cause a child to have, you know, psychological and emotional, uh...
I think children had a rough year last year.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear you.
I think children had a really rough year last year.
They had, I agree.
She says she couldn't answer that, Judy.
I'm sorry, what?
She says she couldn't answer that.
She said they had a rough year.
No, I said children had a really rough year. I'm not going to comment. She's asking about what she had said about what her, that piece of literature she say, but what it was.
Go ahead, so, go ahead.
Um, I think that when children are in a learning environment with professional educators, they do much better.
And I couldn't agree with you more. But now, here's my question also. With all the matrices, because they've got different, um, columns and different connect the dots. So if we kept it simple, that if we required masks to everyone in our school and we had all the other protocols also in place, like hand washing and sanitation, uh, and a person, regardless of who it is, tests positive for COVID, there will be absolutely no need to quarantine, like contact tracing, like last year where groups of 10 or 12 were taken out of school?
Yes, what the state has come out with has said that if in fact a school district operates under masks with distancing and the public health precautions in place, there will be no quarantines necessary for Matt, for vaccinated or unvaccinated children.
Okay.
So what they're saying is, yeah, it is a recommendation. So what they're saying is, you don't have to. The problem with Class A reporting is the person who has COVID-19 will have to isolate.
Right. The sick child or a person would isolate, but none of the...
And its contacts typically are put in quarantine to make sure they don't get the disease. But because of masking, because last year in the schools, we had so, so few outbreaks because kids were masked.
Exactly, they were masking. So in addition to the masks, then, they could apply for exemptions and if they sign off, we would honor them.
I couldn't hear you.
Yes, yes, they can, yes, they can apply for exemptions.
Now, would the children that have the exemptions have to be quarantined? If they get around an outbreak?
I'm sorry?
Would, uh, if a child has an exemption, which I, you know, we would definitely honor, and they're not wearing a mask, if, would they have to be quarantined if...
Probably, we have to, it's individualized.
Okay, alright, but mask equals five days a week in school.
Alright, what was the other thing you want to say?
Uh, the biggest point I wanted to make is being able to keep kids in school five days a week is critical. And people all around this circle of where you fall, people want their kids...
And people all around this circle of where you fall, people want their kids in school five days a week. Teachers want their students with them five days a week. However, it, right here, I can put it on. It's. I have six feet anyway.
Carry on. No, you don't need, let's just keep the meeting going.
So what we can do is we can keep our kids in school five days with far fewer quarantines and removal from the school area, and we can keep them in five days a week. Okay?
Alright, you know what? Can, can we get a vote on the emotion, please?
I wanted a question.
No, no, Mr. Brown, please.
I wanted a question on the quarantine. Chad Larmour, you have no right to tell me no.
Everybody has a chance to speak. Mr. Brown, please.
No, I want a question on the quarantine. I thought you had to quarantine for five days regardless.
Mr. Brown, please call the roll.
Oh, now I'm in dictatorship? You, you're the dictator?
Please call the roll.
I thought that you had to quarantine for five days. I thought that's what I read, regardless if you had a mask or not. No?
No.
Okay. That's all I wanted to ask. You have no business doing that.
Mr. Brown, please call the roll.
Ms. Matlin?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
No.
Mr. Bussie?
No.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Motion carries three, two.
Can I, can I, can I get, can I get a motion? I separated the tables. I separated the tables up here on purpose. Can I get a motion for the third item on the agenda, masks age seven through 12?
On motion.
Can I, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Would you guys have any discussion? Tammy, Bill, do you want to say?
No, we've already said, but you don't, you don't want, nobody wants to listen.
Actually, there are several, there are several students that responded because they can be vaccinated, and they do not want to wear masks in high school. They want to have a normal year, especially the seniors.
Do you have anything else to say?
No.
Okay. Liz?
Judy, I have something I had to say.
Alright. Grade seven through 12. The quarantine procedures are so strict in that if you're not masked, we are going to be missing a lot of kids. We're going to be forcing, we're going to.
It's my choice whether I want my kid to be quarantined or not.
Mr. Brown, can I get a vote?
It's my choice whether I want my kid to be quarantined.
Mr. Bussie?
I said no. Absolutely not.
Mrs. Strong?
No.
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Ms. Matlin?
Yes.
Motion carries three, two.
Alright, can I?
Did you guys vote this stuff in before we even came here?
No, can I? Can I get a motion for the fourth item on the agenda, please? Can I get a motion for the fourth item on the agenda, please?
On motion.
I will second. Alright. Does anyone have any other?
This is about all staff being required.
This is about staff and visitors.
Okay. I would like to read it, I would like to read a comment that we received in the survey. This is about staff being required. Actually, we have several staff members who do not want to wear masks because they've been vaccinated. Once again, they've been vaccinated. And actually, I'd like to bring that, I'd like to bring up that point. Governor DeWine, he said it is past time for the FDA to take into account that hundreds of millions of people have received these vaccines and to move it from an emergency basis over to a regular basis. I would just plead with them to do that. It is very, very important. Lives are frankly at stake. If they will do that, it won't convince everybody, but there are people out there, we know, who will be convinced if that's done because it's not FDA-approved. And even DeWine has said that. It needs to get moving.
Isn't that the reason why DeWine pushed these vaccinations for the teachers?
Okay, that's why I want to read this.
Other people got it?
Let me, I, I'd like to read this.
So they could be in school?
This is, this is an educator, if they're in a different district, but it's the same thing. It's an educator in a district that was highly encouraged to get the vaccine. We are now mandated to wear masks every day. This person has the vaccine, and they have to wear a mask. It is so hard for students to understand this teacher as they teach and counsel and do their everyday job. Looking back, required, being required to wear a mask when I am vaccinated makes me question a lot of what my district has encouraged me to do and why they are making some decisions on my behalf. I think these are adults that should be able to make their own decisions.
But as educators, we also have to model the expectations. And they, and also with breakthrough, outbreaks coming through, there, the idea that if they could be carrying it and not knowing it and could potentially pass that forward to a student, that is a big concern. And I myself work in an un-air-conditioned 100-year-old building on the third floor. And I will be wearing one as well.
But these same people are out in public all the time without masks. They're all over the place.
And the spread should not come ba- come back as coming from the schools.
How many confirmed Delta, how many confirmed Delta variant cases have there been?
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear.
How many confirmed Delta variant cases are there? Confirmed?
In Summit County?
Yes.
About 96%.
Confirmed Delta? Okay, so how many in our zip code?
I'm sorry?
How many in our zip code?
Oh, I don't know that.
So how many cases are 96% of what?
Well, right now, last week, we had 653 cases. The week before that, we had 388.
600 cases out of 5, 541,000 people in this county.
The week before that, we had about 288, and the week before that, we had 100.
And I, I just want to say something about staffing. The issue for me was because we are not allowed to discriminate between vaccinated and unvaccinated staff, right?
We're not allowed.
We're not allowed to. So it's either everybody has to roll, wear masks, or nobody has to wear masks. The issue is, I believe this, if anything's going to close down a school, it's going to be because we don't have the staff to fill it. You might remember a day last year where our high school administrative team had to go out and buy frozen pizzas at Giant Eagle and come back and cook pizzas for the staff because the cafeteria staff was all quarantined. So if every employee is wearing a mask, then we will not have to worry about the sub-s shortage that we have. If we had 100% staff compliance with vaccine, vaccines, we wouldn't have to worry about that. We don't have that.
But you're at 90%.
We had about 90%.
That's almost our graduation.
It's almost. We had about 90% who signed up for it. I'm guessing that most of those did get it. The fact is, most of our teachers got it. A lot of our classified staff have not. And that's where your, your aides are, your cafeteria staff. And if they're not wearing masks and somebody comes down with COVID, they will be quarantined for 10 days.
So, okay. Alright. Can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Larmour?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Ms. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. Bussie?
No.
Mrs. Strong?
No.
Motion carries three, two.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
On motion.
I'll second. Go ahead. I'll second.
Mrs. McKinley?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Bussie? Mr. Larmour? Ms. Matlin?
Yes.